The interim superintendent of schools and Watertown High School principal. And this evening, I'll serve as the facilitator of this virtual town hall. This is occurring as part of the district's continuing conversations about the use of a high school's mascot, which have been taking place in response to a public request to change the mascot. Since October, the Watertown Public Schools Mascot Committee, which was established by the Board of Education in September, has been meeting to engage in a community discussion with the assistance of experts in the field on the subjects of race, culture, as well as the use of a Native American school mascot and name. The committee's central guiding question has been, what is the educational impact of the current high school mascot? The mascot committee members include Watertown Board of Education members, community members, parents, Watertown High School students, staff members, and administrators. The committee's goal is to inform the Board of Education of their findings on the matter of the mascot's use and to present to the Board recommendations about the current name and mascot in January. Tonight's town hall meeting is another step in the mascot review process. I'd like to acknowledge and thank the members of the Watertown Board of Education who are present at the town hall this evening. A few logistics. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. Speakers cannot yield any of their own remaining time to other speakers. Speakers cannot share their screens or project slide presentations or documents. And all participants, of course, will listen to each speaker respectfully. Thank you to those who submitted testimony as well for the mascot committee's consideration. And we appreciate the time you took to share your thoughts and ideas for the mascot committee to take a look at. The order of speakers tonight was determined by time and date of the speaker's registration. And so, we will begin this evening. Our first speaker is Kat Campagna.
Apologies. Hello and good evening. My name is Kat Campagna, class of two thousand eight. For the last five years, I have lived in the state of Utah, which is home to five major tribes with strong cultural legacies and traditions that are honored by residents. Although I've had the privilege to live in various parts of the country, Watertown will always be my home. I speak to you today through the lens of an HR professional who has concerns that the legacy of the Indian mascot will negatively affect Watertown High School graduates as they apply to universities and enter the workforce. For the better part of a decade, I have acted as Director of Recruiting and Client Relations. I represent a number of candidates who are entering the workforce for the first time, as well as students who are beginning their application and interview process for higher education. I work with hundreds of companies and universities nationwide. The majority of my clients have outlined strong anti-racism policies in addition to their inclusive of company and campus cultures. I must not only determine if a candidate is a technical fit for an organization, but that they will also provide a positive addition to a company's culture, value, and policies. For this reason, I'm very selective with the students that I represent. I'm very familiar with which high schools in the country still use mascots that contribute to racism against Native Americans because Native American inclusion is very important to several of my clients. It is part of my process to perform Google searches and social media checks on potential candidates. If a Watertown High School student applied for a position and I noticed their pride in supporting the Indian mascot in their digital footprint, it would give me pause as I evaluated their candidacy. In an interview, I would certainly ask any student their thoughts on the subject of changing mascots. Their answer would contribute to my decision to represent them as a candidate. If a candidate did not consider the use of the Indians as a mascot to be racist, I would consider this not only a red flag, but a potential liability to my clients. One conversation stands out to me from a former candidate who admitted that photos of her existed on the internet, decked out in her school's Braves attire at a pep rally when she was in high school. This was a decision that she deeply regretted as she applied to the University of Utah, a school known for its incredible relationship with the Ute tribe. She felt as a teenager that she did not understand how her pride in her school's mascot not only hurt Native people, but also reflected on her character. It is difficult enough for young people to break into the workforce and be accepted to top universities. The world is changing. More and more high schools are changing culturally insensitive mascots. More companies are teaching sensitivity training on language that is considered to be racially insensitive, including the use of "Indian" and "chief" to refer to coworkers. I fear the decision to keep the Indians sets the example for students that there is a gray area on the subject of racism. And I implore the Board of Education to understand that, in my experience, organizations are motivated to find the best students and talent while protecting their company and campus culture, both morally and legally. It would be terrible for students to miss out on any future opportunities because this concept was not clearly defined by the decision to retire the Indian mascot. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ellie Missky.
Hello. In August, we publicly presented our thorough, well-researched letter with hundreds of alumni signatures, calling on the Board of Education to change the Watertown High School mascot. In September, the Board of Education created this committee and announced a process to come to a decision on the matter. There have been many opportunities for the community to speak within the past almost five months. The recommendation from this committee is due to the Board of Ed in just a few weeks. Therefore, I will not belabor our points as we have provided the Board of Ed and this committee with ample resources on why the Watertown High School mascot must be changed. But to summarize, we have submitted research and evidence to both the committee and the Board of Education that Native American mascots hurt children psychologically. An attorney from the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, a Connecticut State Agency, spoke on the negative psychological impact on children and the potential legal repercussions of Native American mascots. Importantly, while those who want to keep the mascot tout that it is respectful, we showed that Watertown High School has repeatedly disrespected Native Americans throughout decades with the use of the Indians as mascot. Finally, we have shown that there is widespread support for change, that there is interest in coming together as a community and choosing a mascot that everyone can be proud of. We hope that the Board of Education, like many Connecticut schools and national level teams have already done, makes the right decision so that we can move forward through the process with the process for a new mascot. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Colleen Murphy.
Hi, everyone. To go one step further, we've created a website that is easily accessible with all of this information. We've created WHSMascot.com to communicate this complex issue. It includes all that we have presented to the Board of Education the past five months. We want to make sure that our message is accessible and understandable to every person in the community. This website can be used as a place to find information about this campaign both locally and nationally. It includes educational resources, news stories, statements for the record, evidence of racism and disrespect from the Watertown community, and ways to get involved. Understanding the scope of this issue is difficult, especially if you're only hearing bits and pieces of the story online. So we've created a space that makes it easy to understand. We hope the Board of Ed and Mascot Committee will use this as a resource when making their decision and devote the necessary time to understanding and digesting the research, facts, and information presented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jada Ramirez.
Good evening, and thank you in advance for your time. My name is Jada Ramirez, class of twenty eighteen, Watertown High School graduate, pronouns E and F. And this is Kristen Vanderland, class of twenty sixteen, high school graduate, pronouns G and F. We are co-directors and speaking on behalf of the upcoming workshop of the organization, The Reflection Zone. We want to thank the Board of Education for hosting this today, as well as the network of alumni who have brought this to light and have been working so hard to resolve this issue. We have been following this issue of the Watertown High School mascot for the past couple of months, and we strongly support its retirement. We have followed closely to both sides of the argument. One of the main arguments for those opposed to retiring the mascot is that the mascot honors Native Americans, and that it is to retire it is to erase Native American history. We would like to address this and explain that why these arguments are not factually correct. First, the verbiage of the name "Indian" as of itself is incorrect and inaccurate, especially when used by people outside of the culture. If you want the history of Native Americans to be honored and valued, then their history and culture should be recognized accurately. Second, indigenous people were here prior to colonization, when the first explorers mistakenly named the inhabitants of North America "Indians," referring to Indians. And in the term "Indians" has been deemed inaccurate since the sixties, it is excusable for our high school to still be using outdated and inaccurate terminology. At this time, I would like to transition to Kristen Vanderland.
Additionally, not only is the word "Indians" inaccurate and offensive when used by non-Natives, the visual representation of the mascot is a destructive caricature. The image does not represent all Native Americans, especially not those who are from our local lands. It perpetuates harmful stereotypes about Native Americans. Mascots and logos are representative of the high school sports teams, which can be competitive and aggressive. When you use a culture as a symbol for athletic competitions, it indirectly relates them to contention and aggression and can send a subliminal message that they are prone to conflict. Those connotations should not be applied to any group of people, let alone one that is hundreds of unique cultures and ways of life. The use of Native American imagery alone is not honoring them, but is appropriating a stereotypical image. Finally, to address the idea that to retire the mascot is to erase Native American history, it is also an inaccurate argument. From our research, it seems as though the Watertown High School Indian mascot wasn't implemented until around the mid nineteen fifties, when Watertown High School was predominantly white and local tribes were all but nonexistent. There were no courses taught in partnership with Native Americans when the mascot was implemented, so there were no students learning their history. The purpose of the mascot was not there to preserve Native history. It was used to promote school spirit at Watertown High School. Using the Indian as a mascot does not create education about Native Americans' culture. It's destructive and harmful to both Native and non-Native students, especially if the school system's curriculum does not provide proactive education to teach about and honor their history. From our time at Watertown High School, we feel as though we did not receive a solid education on Native American history, culture, or current events. So far, we have not seen a comprehensive or concrete plan from the opposing argument on how they would include Native American education within the school system or community while keeping the mascot in place. To honor Native Americans, we can listen to them and retire the Indian mascot. Additionally, we can ask our local tribes what they feel would be productive ways to be honored and respected. By speaking with these tribes, we would be honoring Native Americans in an appropriate, respectful, and peaceful way, and further educating our students about a culture different from theirs. We hope the Board of Education will choose to retire the Watertown High School Indian mascot. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karina Sorenson.
Good evening. My name is Karina Sorenson. I'm also a part of The Reflection Zone. Thank you for creating the space for us to speak. I'm a twenty fourteen Watertown High graduate, and when I went to the high school, I was all in when it came to school spirit and the high school community. I was involved in all of the extracurriculars, the clubs, art classes, and I played in the marching band at every home football game. I was a Watertown Indian, and I was proud of it. And while I still feel the same sentiments I did to my high school days, as well as the sense of camaraderie that came with it, after much research and thought, I can now acknowledge that it is time to retire the Watertown Indian mascot. And that, as a high school student, I was not equipped with the education to understand why our Indian mascot was racist and destructive to the Native American community. I've researched the opposing argument's main point, which is that this mascot is honoring Native Americans and their culture, and that by removing it, we would be dishonoring and erasing them from our history. But I disagree. The National Congress of American Indians states that there are five hundred and seventy-four federally recognized indigenous tribes in the U.S. Every tribe has its own unique culture, daily living, and way of life. One image of a chief cannot possibly be representative of all tribes. This creates a stereotype about Native Americans and does nothing in teaching about or respecting their history. Furthermore, the depiction of the Indian mascot does not accurately represent Native tribes local to our area, and instead depicts one that seems like it comes from a Midwestern tribe. We do not use other cultures or races as mascots because we know that that would be gravely inappropriate, as well as knowing that there's not one stereotypic image to represent all of the unique cultures within each of these races. So why do we allow it for Native Americans? I can think of many other ways to honor Native Americans that do not require stereotypical mascots. Some ways to honor Native tribes include updating our Eurocentric curriculum to include Native American perspectives, requiring students to read indigenous authored books, or recognizing Christopher Columbus Day as Indigenous People's Day in our school system. If we want to honor tribes nationally, more effort could be made in preserving Native land, or exploring the epidemic of missing and murdered indigenous women and girls, as stated by the FBI's Indian Country Program, or addressing why Native Americans have disproportionately higher rates of many chronic conditions and health issues as found by the CDC, including having the highest suicide rate among all other races and ethnicities in the country. And with our current COVID- nineteen pandemic, where virus cases among Native Americans was three and a half times that as white people. I believe these are all vitally productive in preserving and honoring indigenous culture, and the solution to these problems cannot possibly be fixed by a high school mascot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Bukowski.
Thank you, Dr. Parlato. Good evening. My name is Chris Bukowski. My pronouns are "they/them," and I am a longtime Watertown resident and advocacy director for The Reflection Zone. I want to take this opportunity to discuss intentions and impacts as they relate directly to the Watertown High School mascot. I feel as though this distinction has been overlooked in the discourse relating to retiring the WHS mascot. Intentions are rooted in a purpose, plan, or desired outcome. We cannot control how our intentions are received by others, regardless of how well-meaning those intentions are. The impact of our decisions, behaviors, and words are entirely dependent on the individuals and communities that are affected. In this case, it is imperative that the Watertown community takes a step back and listens to the voice of indigenous people. While I understand that there are folks who believe that keeping the current mascot is a celebration of and an ode to indigenous history and culture, this belief fails to consider the impact of outdated language and culturally insensitive imagery of Native Americans on the individuals who hold these identities. Associating indigenous peoples with sport, competition, conflict, physical dominance is dehumanizing and disrespectful. These covert messages are harmful to communities. Rodney Butler, the chairman of the Mashantucket Pequot Tribal Nation here in Connecticut, composed a highly compelling letter to the Board of Education detailing the detrimental effects of Native-inspired mascots. I am so grateful for Mr. Butler's willingness to speak to the impacts of the WHS mascot, and I sincerely hope that this inspires the Watertown community to consider why our mascot is harmful and to begin the process of repairing that harm. It is time to take the initiative to not only retire the mascot, but to involve all Watertown students in accurate, engaging, and reflective educational programming to combat stigma, racism, and widely-held inaccurate beliefs about indigenous peoples and their cultures. Native and indigenous cultures are rooted in connection to spirit, to others, to nature, and to tradition. Our community needs to celebrate these virtues by retiring the WHS mascot. Watertown students deserve access to culturally responsive and culturally competent education. This begins with accountability. We must take ownership of our impact. We can start by taking the initiative to educate our students without placing this burden on those who have been harmed by Watertown's culturally-appropriate mascot. We can, and we must do better.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce Chancholo.
Evening. I'm Bruce Chancholo, twenty-two Malvern Hill Road, Watertown, Connecticut. I've been a resident of this community for over fifty years. I'm a product of our public school system and a proud member of the class of nineteen seventy-eight from Watertown High School. I do not want the mascot changed. I've been extremely proud to represent Watertown High School on the athletic field, in the classroom, and civic organizations in town. The committee's goal is to inform the Board of Education of its findings from these types of meetings. I got two suggestions for the committee to bring back to the Board. Number one, this is a community issue, and I suggest we treat it as such with a town-wide vote, and then let the chips fall where they may. Secondly, I see, I would like to see, a curriculum that teaches about Native Americans, similar to what Governor Lamont announced last month. Over three hundred years ago, in the area that is now Watertown, belonged to Passituck Indians. In sixteen eighty-four, Thomas Judd and thirty-five others bought the land from these Indians, and our town history has begun. The land wasn't taken, they weren't driven off, it was purchased. So right from the beginning, our cultures have been able to coexist and have mutual respect for each other. It disturbs me greatly that some would want to lose our heritage, stripping the symbol of our alma mater, separating our fans and alumni with a piece of how they define themselves. It pains me greatly that individuals that have not lived in Watertown and do not live in Watertown are able to voice their opinion on this. I can, I'm not naive, and I can see how you want to get input from all different facets, but my concern is that they will skew people's view. How do they know? They don't live here, they don't have the sense of pride of being from our community. Which brings me to a famous quote, "Those that do not remember the past are condemned to repeat it." Instead of losing all sense of our heritage, let's move forward and educate our youth. Therefore, I propose not to remove our mascot, but to use it as a teaching aid. On December ninth, two thousand twenty, Governor Lamont announced that Connecticut was the very first state in the Union to require all high schools to offer courses in African-American, Puerto Rican, and Latino studies. What about the Native Americans? Does anybody know who Jim Thorpe is? How about Ira Hayes? Do you realize Will Rogers is also a Cherokee? This requirement is a result of Governor Lamont signing a bill, Public Act nineteen-dash-twelve, that directs all regional and local boards of education to include these course studies and provide students with a better understanding of African-American, Puerto Rican, and Latino contributions. The Connecticut State Board of Education has approved this, which was the final step to implement this requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chancholo. Our next speaker will be Nicholas Salerno.
Good evening, everyone. I am Nicholas Salerno, a town resident. I am against the Board of Education, Town Council, and many other town residents' stance on removing the Watertown High School mascot Indians. The Watertown Indians have always been special. I've been a member of the Watertown Indians' baseball, football, and basketball team. I've been a member of these teams from two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen. I may not have been a student of Watertown High School, however, I have worn the same uniform that bears the name Watertown Indians. Wearing a uniform that holds the name Indians shows pride and dignity. Many of you may not know that the Watertown Indians' team name and mascot honors the Native Americans that once settled on our homeland a hundred years ago. In fact, more than two hundred and ten years ago, the era now known as Watertown belonged to the local Passituck Indians. In sixteen eighty-four, Thomas Judd and thirty-five others bought the land from the Indians, and town history began. The Watertown Indians' name and mascot became true as a sign of symbol in respect to the Passituck Indians. Our founding settlers bought this land that is now known as Watertown. It was not stolen, and no war broke out between the Indians and the Watertown settlers. Many are poets of the Watertown Indians and this mascot. They say it shows racism, injustice, and hatred towards the Indians that once settled here. However, I will find that true. Whatever is shown in Watertown settlers and Watertown residents in racist, hatred, and injustice towards Indians, simply there isn't much. Very my former teammates and I were honored to walk out on the basketball court, baseball diamond, and the football court, wearing a uniform that honors the people that worked in the original settlers of this land, the Indians. In fact, our uniform never had a picture of an Indian or any of the Indians that once settled here. We always had a W on our helmet and jersey. Yes, we do have merchandise that has a logo of Indians. In fact, that Indian logo is a representation of the Indians that once occupied the land and the area. I never see my former teammates, coaches, referees, and parents with hatred, racism, and injustice towards the Indians that once settled on our homeland. In fact, my former teammates, coaches, referees, and parents were honored and proud to be called the Watertown Indians, who have always shown respect to Indians. In fact, we never saw hatred towards Indians, whether it raised religion, gender, and sexual orientations. Furthermore, having a team named the Watertown Indians as a symbol of building bridges with the Indians that once settled on our homeland, having a team named the Watertown Indians to the return of respect to the Indians that once settled here. First, it shows a sign of respect. Second, it shows a sign of honor. Third, it shows a sign of love. Lastly, it shows the bravery that the Indians have given to people from an urban and vast based community society. No one in this town, if you might say, has lived a life of pain. Our original settlers, Indians, were highly advanced, smart, outgoing, and other kids.
These traits are the backbone and the building blocks of who we became as a town. That's why it's important to have a team named and a mascot after the Indians. In conclusion, we must keep the Watertown Indians and this mascot. The Watertown Indians and our mascot honors the local Passituck Indians. Henceforth, we are honoring and respecting the local tribes. By removing the Watertown Indians and this mascot, we are erasing the history. The members of the Town Council, Board of Ed, and residents of town who want to remove the Indians want to eradicate rather than educate. It is essential to keep the Indians in this mascot. By keeping the Indians in this mascot, we are educating individuals on the history of our town, and we are honoring the original status of our land. I urge you all to vote in keeping the Watertown Indians, and this should be a ballot for everyone in the town, and we should be voting on it on the town budget on an election. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Georgianne Palumba.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see people on here. I'm for keeping the Indian logo, and I'd like to tell you a little bit why. I wasn't planning on speaking. Another member of my family was, but my mom is Native American, and she's proud to call herself an Indian. And she's a descendant of the Micmac Indian Tribe, which is out of New Brunswick, Nova Scotia area, and down the east coast of the United States. And Maine is a big place of where they settled, and that's where my mom is from. As a little girl, I was proud to go up there and spend my summers on the Penobscot River, where my grandmother lived and where my godmother lived, and spend learning how to pick berries, how to make fresh jam, how to sew, and all of that stuff. They didn't have hot water, they didn't have toilets. We, they had toilets, but they weren't like ours, but we ran our water and boiled it on the stove for hot water, and it was a great way to grow up. So I do know about Indian culture, and just a little bit of background. My name is Georgianne, and the Micmac, a big feast of celebration, is St. Anne's Day because they were, when they got integrated, they were part of Roman Catholic Church. And my father is George, and my grandmother named me, I was born on St. Anne's Day. So that's a big source of pride for me also. So I am proud to be a Watertown Indian. I have coached softball, I have coached cheerleading, and have played for both. My son is now a Watertown Indian, and he's a junior, didn't get to play football this year, played the faith games, but still, it was, when he made his first touchdown his freshman year, I've never been prouder to say that my family is continuing the tradition where my father first started the Pop Warner football as Watertown Water Oak Indians. And it was never anything shameful, it was always a source of pride. The Native Americans are proud people. The name "Indian" is not derogatory, as Redskins is derogatory. Indian is a proud, brave person, and as the young man Nicholas Salerno said, he was proud to walk out on the field as a Watertown Indian, so are all our boys and young ladies. to walk out on the field as a Watertown Indian, so are all our boys and young ladies. Um, and as, uh, Mr. Chancholo said, everybody that I have talked to in town and went to school with, and I'm a class of nineteen-eighty-five alumni, um, is wondering why only this small group of people that nobody knows, that didn't even grow up in town, are all against, uh, keeping the name, and it's, the committee is so small, and nobody for the Indian is being heard. We'd like to have a townwide vote, because I believe it would be overwhelmingly for keeping the Indian name. And, uh, I don't know, it's very, very, uh, very much a source of pride for the coaches down in my family, and that's all I gotta say. Go Indians, bruh! Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to our next speaker and see if George Fenn, um, comes back on. So our next speaker is Kate Overton. Okay, we'll try again for Ms. Overton. So our next speaker will be Kelly Lambert.
Hold on. Hi. Evening, everybody. Uh, once again, I'm here as an alumnus, parent, and community member, addressing this forum to request Watertown High School to retire its Indian mascot. Tonight, I would like to address the beliefs others mentioned for keeping a name we barely use. I understand that many people feel this mascot is a symbol of honor, respect, and pride to native people in our town. However, Native Americans across our country and locally have repeatedly stated that being represented as a mascot is not an honor. Native people are a living, breathing, diverse, accomplished race, and deserve more than being reduced to an outdated logo on a shirt that doesn't even represent a local tribe. To address the idea of the mascot being a source of pride, I ask this question. Should pride be assigned here? Our pride should be placed on the accomplishments of the students and the alumni, not a mascot. During my senior year at Watertown High School, the football team won the state championship. Changing the name will not take that trophy away, because students earned it, not a mascot. Not one person in this town has called to eradicate native people or cancel their culture. They are a living race, and we want to respect and honor them through telling their stories and struggles via education for all. I know this is a difficult decision for our Board of Education. Choosing not to retire the mascot's name and image has implications for our students and community, including the image we present beyond our town's borders. As a parent, it is often hard to make decisions for my children that I know they will not like, but that are best for them. This decision is a leadership decision, much like those a parent makes. It is not up for vote. You cannot have a majority of people vote on a minority issue. We must retire the mascot and add native curriculum in our schools. This is what will honor and respect not only indigenous peoples, but all races and cultures, as well as, as well as serve our district's educational mission to meet the needs of all students. Retiring the mascot is the right and honorable choice to make in 2021 for the future of our school district and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Steven Filippi.
Hi, my name is Steven Filippi. Class of nineteen-eighty-eight, state championship football team. This should be brought to a vote. Let the town decide, instead of a few select people trying to do a cancel culture, because they haven't had nothing else to do. The, we don't use the Indian, we don't mock it, we don't do any, any of the other stuff that they keep trying to say to dehumanize people. I say that we should bring it to a vote. And if they want something to do, they can come volunteer at the firehouse, because we need, we need members if they don't have anything else to do, besides try to go get rid of a mascot. And waste the money trying to do this. They should te-, teach more about how to get people in town off of heroin. I'm tired of going to calls and giving people Narcan to save their lives. So, bring it to a vote in the town, let everybody decide, instead of just a few people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Dave Santangeli.
Hello, everybody, and, uh, thank you for the time. Um, I'm a proud resident of Watertown for the last twenty-five years. I have four children who go to school here, although I am, wasn't born and raised in this town. I consider myself a proud member of this community. Um, all four of my children, like I said, have been raised here, and two of them, uh, haven't only played at the high school, but have captained many of the teams, and I truly consider myself, I bleed orange and black, for sure. And with that said, I think we have an opportunity as a community to do the appropriate thing and change our mascot. We should be looking at this as a real opportunity to agree on a new mascot that better identifies with who we are as a community now. Personally, I'm tired of being known as the W's. We haven't been the Indians in quite some time, and if we are really being honest, we never will be again. That's been our athletic reality. This is our chance to move past this saga and to choose a more appropriate mascot that really reflects our values as a community, a name we could all rally around. If the pro teams, such as the Indians and Redskins, along with countless minor league and college teams who stand to lose tens of millions of dollars in revenue alone, see the value in this cause, so should we. It's a time, it's time to be, to move from the past and be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Shannard.
Hello, how's everyone doing? One second. So, I think it's fair to say, after this year, uh, we've all done a bit of, a bit more reminiscing than we usually have. Um, I'm here to say that nostalgia can be a wonderful thing, but I'm also here to say that it can be dangerously misleading. Um, I graduated from Watertown, uh, High School the year 2009, and amongst my fellow classmates, we all remember the state of the building, the high school that we left. It was older, dilapidated, and at times, kind of isolated, and, and because of all the, the construction going on. Um, after a while, it kind of became humorous, we kind of made the best of it, but we all knew that it was gonna be for the better. And for many of us who have returned to the high school in one facet or another post-graduation and saw the fruits of those labors, we knew it was worth it, even if that meant we had to make the sacrifice. This year, we've had our whole worlds turned upside down, and I know some are tempted to cling on to the ways of the past, but it's a futile effort. The time, time doesn't run backwards. Now is not the time to revert back to antiquated ideas, behaviors, and more importantly, labels. For those people who still vehemently insist on the town's high school name to remain unaltered, I just want you to ponder a question. As a town, what are we saying? We, as, of our population of predominantly white people, so when we have our young students, our future, wearing a school name and mascot that misrepresents the very people we've already regulate, uh, regu-, relegated to the margins of society, I once again ask, what are we saying? I have walked the streets of Watertown, and I have seen on telephone poles inflammatory posters such as, "Black Lives Matter is a domestic terrorist organization." So, I ask one more time, what are we saying? Now, forgive me if I don't share the same starry-eyed optimism over a vote, um, just because I don't trust the people of this town with the vote, quite honestly. Um, that may seem blunt, but I, I was told by the speakers tonight to, to look back at our history. So I implore you to do the same. If we want to look back at our history, we have a terrible record with Native Americans. And I just don't think we can be trusted with this kind of decision, quite frankly. And, listen, the South thought that slavery was right, and they voted for it, but I think we all know that it's morally repugnant, just like I think this mascot is morally repugnant. So, with that being said, change is not easy, but it's necessary. And a journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step, and that step is tonight, change the mascot, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kate Overton?
I'm here, I apologize, I was on mute before.
Okay.
My name is Kate Overton, and I am good friends with WHS 2008 alumni Kat Campagna. I am Si Changul Oyate. The name the US government gave us is the Rosebud Sioux Tribe. We didn't know until years later that they had changed it without our permission. Every tribe has a name that they call themselves, and these names differ from the names the US government forced upon us to adopt as our legal names. We may use the term Indian for each other, but we prefer anyone who is not native to call us native or indigenous. I am a Great Plains Indian, and therefore, my tribe is the one most commonly depicted as mascots and that are used as racial slurs, including imagery Watertown High School has used in the past. We are the ones who lived in teepees, hunted the buffalo, and used sweat lodges in our ceremonies. The imagery of the Indian wearing a headdress used in stereotypical Indian caricatures is the headdress of my tribe. Every feather in a headdress is earned, it is an honor to wear one. I am not your mascot. You do not honor us by using the name the Indians. This argument is not new. Twenty-five years ago, when we moved to Utah, the mascot of our junior high was the Redskins. My mother was integral in getting this mascot changed. The school allowed the student population to vote on a new mascot and landed on the Razorbacks. The majority of mascots used in American schools are animals, so I ask you this. How do you feel you are honoring me and my people by putting us in the same category as animals? I understand that the support of the Native American Guardians Association has been brought in to defend the decision to keep the mascot. Through watching the videos on their website, it is clear to me that these people are not a part of the Plains Indians' tribes. It is not their tribe's customs, higher rituals, and traditions that are being used as mascots, and I am here to say, they do not speak for me or my tribe. My family is immense. We do not use the white man's way of describing family. If we are related, we are related, it doesn't matter how. My unchi was the eighth child out of nine kids, so I have hundreds of cousins and relatives, and they all feel the same way I do about the use of Indian as a mascot. We are all on the same page. It is time for you to listen to us, and it's time for change. This is not okay. This is about us as a whole, we are not your mascots. When you keep the name of your mascot as the Indians, you're teaching your children and telling the community that you side with the oppressor. By keeping the mascot, the Indians, you're allowing your students to attend a school that supports racist tradition. To retire your Indian mascot doesn't erase me. I am still here. We did not erase the history of our people, the colonizers did that. Native American history needs to be taught by Native Americans. I do not believe there is any way for the town of Watertown to honor the Plains Indians or any tribe through the continued use of their mascot. We still teach the ways of our ancestors to our people. The reason I know my history is because of my mother, my unchi, and my aunties, not because of how it was taught through the use of school mascots. When you keep the name the Indians, you're telling people that you are complicit in racism. I will close by sharing this Maya Angelou quote, "Once you know better, do better."
Thank you. I saw him on there, that's why I'm waiting. I'd like to thank everyone for coming. On behalf of the committee, you provided us with so much to talk about and think about, and we're very, very appreciative for your ideas and your input. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Dr. Parlato.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parlato.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.